The time is now 6:00 PM. It's Thursday, August the 21st, and the regular meeting of this Planning and Zoning Board in the council chambers will not come to order. And for preliminary matters, Mr. Director, do we have any agenda additions or deletions?
No.
How about the board members?
None.
Seeing none, I will open this meeting up for public comment. And I might suggest to you that you're welcome to come up now and have public comment. There's probably only going to be one thing on our agenda if you would like to do that, and we'll just close the initial public comment, and you can speak during that particular item if that's why you're here. If not, if you have something in addition you'd like to present to us, please come forward now. Seeing nobody coming forward at this moment, I will close the public part of the hearing, and we will go to public hearings on a legislative agenda item. And it's an ordinance of the CEO of Vero Beach, Florida, amending the text of the land use elements of the Vero Beach Comprehensive Plan to include an objective and policies for the original town neighborhood, providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date. And Tim, do you want to make a presentation now?
Yes, as I told everybody, I'll have one of the more lousy PowerPoint presentations done, but we'll try to make it a little more interesting. Basically, this is the first step in the process to move forward to adopt this amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. And just for people don't know the process, basically, the Planning and Zoning Board acts as the advisory body that this public hearing will make a recommendation to the city council. The council will hold a public hearing on this, but it'll be a transmittal hearing. Since it's a text amendment, it has to go through the full review, meaning it's sent to the state for a comment period, which typically takes 45 or more days to have done before the -- then it comes back to the city council for adoption at a later date. Just to give a little background on this, we -- first, in 2005, we had the Vision Plan, which basically set out some principles and recommendations to protect our neighborhoods, and a lot of it had to do with the protection of our historic intercity neighborhoods, and this was an impetus for a lot which followed. In 2008, we had a Historic Resource Survey completed for both Osceola Park and for Original Town, done by Anna Brady, consultant, and she and her other consultant, they both -- they identified a lot of the historic buildings, updated the inventory in that area. If you all recall, the last inventory we had was back in 1992, I think. So this updated all, and it's been very useful in this whole process. Then in 2009, at the request of the Original Town Neighborhood, the city hired a consultant which helped prepare with the neighborhood, the Original Town Neighborhood Enhancement Strategies. And basically, these strategies form the premise for a lot of what was followed up in this amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. In 2010, the city did the Evaluation Appraisal Report, and that's required when you're updating the comp plan. You have to every so often come up with a major update. Everything's changed since that was done, but basically, that did set forth some principles that would be followed in the update, the comp plan, and one of them was to identify specific neighborhood -- strategies for specific neighborhoods where neighborhoods were interested in having those type of policies in place to come forward and be adopted in the Comprehensive Plan. In 2012, we came out what we call the White Paper, which is still here. And basically, the White Paper was the background and analysis for proposed objective and policies that you see before you today, and it gives you a background on how those were formed and the basis for those. We went through a series of Planning and Zoning Board workshops. One, I believe, was with the -- in the Original Town -- we had the Original Town invite that community over to the city hall chambers in one of those workshops. But this all culminated in March 15, where we had a neighborhood workshop in the neighborhood, in the Original Town Neighborhood. At that time, there were issues that were brought up, I think the most important, where there was -- people felt that we were a little too negative in the way and focused more on, say, incentives rather than on just straight regulations on it. So we did some more revisions to it to try to accomplish the same goal of preserving the neighborhood, attracting residential development, keeping the historical character, but at the same time, kind of giving -- looking at some incentives that could be used to accomplish that same thing rather than regulating people, where we're not getting incentive in the neighborhood. And that was addressed at our final workshop in May, the Planning and Zoning Board's final workshop, May 15. And basically, what you have before you tonight is, with some editorial changes to it, as I kept going through it, is what was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board at that The proposed draft ordinance, there's an ordinance that covers this, which is the adoption ordinance, but in Exhibit A, basically, has the new Section 1.4.20, which is residential strategies. It has the new Objective 12, which is for Original Town, and it has new policies 12.1 through 12.9. We also have a new figure, 1.6, which defines the boundary of the Original Town Neighborhood. Exhibit B is basically what the White Paper was. It's been magically transformed into a technical support document to fit the format of the comp plan. Normally, in a comp plan, when you do this, you would probably include that and amend the existing text, but as we've talked about so many times before, the existing text needs to be totally revised, and it would be -- so we've done what we did before when we brought the comp plan into compliance. We thought we'd just put it into a technical appendix, so it's there for people to see why we had these policies and that background analysis for that. And eventually, when next year, when we do a full review of this, we're going to incorporate the Original Town and Osceola Park, hopefully we have all that done, into what we end up with in the full update of the comp plan. Just go briefly over the Original Town issues, and this is in the White Paper and discussion. First is the encroachment of disruptive conditional uses and non-residential uses in the neighborhood, loss of residence and fragmenting of residential areas. And I think I, in my -- in the document itself, that we indicated like 70 single-family homes had been eliminated since 1970 in the area. The population is now down to less than 400 people that we can estimate of that, and a good 46% of the parcel zone, RM1012, which is most of the neighborhood, are in some sort of conditional use. So that tells you, and I'll show you, we have a map, kind of go over some of the existing land uses. There's -- I would point out, is the need for residential infill, increased residential development, and I think one of the core things we keep bringing up is we need to get the population base up to create a viable neighborhood, and that's, you know, or we'll keep getting this kind of disruption. There's a need for preservation, historic grid pattern, the streets and alleyways. In the past, we've been losing those to vacating, to various uses in that area. A need for comprehensive strategies to stabilize, enhance residential areas, and need for active participation, property, and business owners and residents in conjunction with the city. And I keep emphasizing that, I did this morning with the Historic Preservation Commission on code enforcement, but it's essential that we have the community actively involved in any of these things that we're doing, or it really is very difficult for the city to do that. It's only going to be successful if we have an active community. This gives, just briefly, shows you the existing land use. This is a little bigger than the Original Town Neighborhood, but if you look at, you can see all the blue color. That's all conditional-type uses, institutional uses. You can see where streets have been vacated. The white is showing right away. Alley's are shown also in white, but you can see where historic right-of-way have been vacated. Most of the concentrated residential units that are left or above, up in this north area, over 22nd Street, this is where the concentration of historic buildings are, identified in survey. So this kind of gives you a good look at the neighborhood. The orange ones are properties that have more than one unit on it. The yellow are properties that are single-family. Objective 12, and this is the primary objective, I'm just going to paraphrase this because there's a lot of verbose language in it. The key elements are stabilizing the underlying physical fabric of the neighborhood, promoting increased homeownership and housing opportunities, and also retaining the historical residential character of the neighborhood. And those are, I think, the most important objectives we're looking at, that the policies are intended to support. 12.1 is that we recognize the boundaries of the Original Town Neighborhood for planning purposes, and we do this is because these policies are oriented to this neighborhood. We had to have a fixed boundary area. Now, I'm going to bring up the -- this shows you the boundaries of it, and the boundaries of this were done during when the enhancement strategies were done back with the neighborhood back four years ago, and they came up with the boundaries. Policy 12.2, these are the key elements of this policy, and this has to do with, as I said, a key element is getting neighborhood participation and the stakeholders. And so part of this policy is recognizing the neighborhood contact organization, the Original Town Neighborhood Association. This doesn't preclude other associations, but the key ingredient here is we're trying to get a focal point or a liaison where the staff can -- has people they can go to and will help in identifying problems or making the other residents aware of issues that are going on in the neighborhood. So I think this is key to any of these neighborhood programs working. And then we point out the neighborhood associations be notified on land use changes, amendments to Comprehensive Plan policies, major site plans, and conditional uses. And we do have some requirements for notifying people over 500 feet for site plans and that, but this would cover more than that and allow the neighborhood to get involved in, if they need to contact staff or come to the hearings or whatever, to provide input on this. The third is the -- is ask the neighborhood association to help in coordinating anything. I think, you know, one of the things that sometimes that we do are comprehensive, let's say, code enforcement sweeps of a neighborhood. It'd be good to have the neighbors volunteering and working with the staff to help to do that kind of thing, or a solid waste effort in the neighborhood. The other is the Neighborhood Contact Organizations Act as a liaison. As I pointed out, there would be a contact we knew who we could go to to talk about certain aspects or identify some issues that are coming up to them. 12.3, this is the protection of the historic gridiron pattern and connectivity, and by denying, this would be private petitions, or property owner-initiated petitions for abandonment of public right-of-way or license application for permit, private use of public right-of-way would be prohibited. So basically, this wouldn't -- the city would still be able to do that where it felt it was in its interest, but we wouldn't have -- private landowners would not be able to go through that process or be in violation of this policy. And for people to understand, the comp plan is the overseeing document. It has the power, it's done by ordinance, so it supersedes your land development regulations. So it's important, when you have these kind of comments in there, that does mean something.
If there was, if there was a, excuse me, Tim, if there was a project in the community that they wanted to abandon a alley, for example, and the community was in favor of it, how would they go about overriding that?
Well, that would be, when you say "community," that would be more of a city council, you know, they normally would have to get the property owners to agree to that, but that wouldn't be one individual property owner saying, "I need --" like, that's basically what we do now, where an individual property owner will ask for it. They still have to get approval generally of the other property owners because it brings it back on the tax roll. But I would say that, let's say there was some important alley or some place that would benefit the community for whatever reason coming up, that certainly would be something that the council could be brought up to the council to move forward with that, on that kind of thing.
So there is a pathway for that to occur if the community was in favor of this action?
Right. Yeah, I might put some more language in it. That's not a bad thing. I don't want, you know, you get into this to interpret these things. It might be good to put a little follow-on language in that, and I certainly can certainly do that. That would be my application of that, that this basically, if the city is the sponsor of that kind of thing, clearly, if there was a project that benefited the community, let's say they were putting, say, a park or something in there.
A lot of reasons, maybe even redevelopment of some kind of a particular bad property.
And that may be due, but that would have to be city-initiated to do that, but you're right.
Mr. Chairman, so what you're saying is if an individual wanted to do it, it would require a comp plan change back, but you would get around that by having it city-initiated?
You would have city-initiated, and I think, you brought this up, whether I need to put some more language in there. I don't have it right now, but I might consider that as a concern brought up, you know, because I don't want to have to get interpretation of everything on that. But that was the intent of that. On 12.4, this has to do with zoning changes, and if you all recall, we initially had this, I believe, in the overlay district. Well, that takes a lot of time. This is an easier way, I felt, to get to the same thing, would be to put a policy in the comp plan itself that basically made it more difficult to make a rezoning from residential to non-residential. There would be two other aspects. There are several criteria that have to be met in the land development regulations. This would add two more, two more specific criteria that would have to be met. And you can see, rather than just banning it totally, which I think would be problematic and legally challengeable, we put in these, so they would have to demonstrate this under competent substantial evidence that meets these criteria also.
Didn't we say, when we were talking about the old San Dan School and the problem in Riomar, or the concerns in Riomar, that we had never downzoned a residential to non-residential?
Well, the Riomar thing really had to do with the underlying future land use that was residential over, but allowed like five or six, five different zoning districts, which could increase the density. So we put in some specific language dealing with single-family zoning in the comp plan. I don't have it with me right here.
So there's nothing in the comp plan today that says you can't, nowhere in the city can you downzone?
Oh, there's nothing, there's nothing to prevent downzoning. I mean, you have issues there of when downzoning. I mean, we, basically, the St. Francis Manor, it went through, it was a downzoning, but they wanted, they wanted to do it.
They wanted to do it.
Yes. Now, when you downzone, when they don't want to do it, then you got Burt Harris issue and possibly, and then some other issues, so. You have to have some really good reasons to do it that way. 12.5, this is the, "Any proposed expansion, new or existing conditional use should be required to demonstrate that the proposed project will not adversely impact existing historic residential buildings in addition and meeting all conditional use criteria in the LDRs." And this was a change from the last one. I mean, I think it's kind of balancing. We're trying to protect the residential and historic character, but at the same time, I believe what we had before, we were going to prohibit any kind of change in that, and that did raise some issues. So we felt that the, the staff felt that one way to deal with this would be to provide a little more flexibility in that, but still try to protect, what we're trying to do is protect the historic residential character. So if we got a land use that is really objectionable anyway, and the community has no historic thing, clearly, that's something that could be taken. Now, most conditional use, they'd still have to go through conditional use process, doesn't avoid that, but it wasn't an out-and-out prohibition about doing that, which we had in the initial set of policies, I'm sorry. Okay, 12.6, all right, the playing, this is the staff report, that the planning and development staff shall prepare a draft report by July 15. I put a date in there, it was up in January, but I had to move it on a little more because it's taken a while. Identify specific regulatory changes to encourage and facilitate compatible residential infill development and redevelopment. Such investigation may cover, but not necessarily be limited to the following. So we identify five different things. First is the overlay district to facilitate infill by modifying underlying development standard requirements, a residential group project, it's similar to a plan, commercial development such as the Hampton Inn, where they can come in and modify.
I have questions on that one. I did, I read it, and I just wrote, "I don't understand exactly what you were, can you give me a little more further?"
Well, if you all recall, in, on the commercial development, they were able to bring it in, and they were able to waive numerous standards in there to fit the project. We would allow this, but they would have to meet certain specific standards for that neighborhood, which would have to be developed. And clearly, talking about preserving the historic character and all that, that would all be included in there, and they had to be compatible, so there would be standards that had to be developed. I mean, there's, as I said, any of these incentives, the intent is not just to allow you to go willy-nilly and increase development. The whole idea is to address the problems in the community, make the community more sustainable, keep that residential predominant residential character that remains as well as the historic character. So it's a balancing act. I don't have all the answers here because this is basically would, some of that exploration would be done during the preparation of this report.
Under certain circumstances, though, this one could be negative to keeping the residential character of the neighborhood under certain circumstances?
Yeah, well, it really, it could be. It's really going to, or maybe in the eye of the beholder, but it really is going to depend on the standards you place in there for that.
So it's the detail that'll make the difference?
The detail make the difference, and I guess the question you get into some of these, if you give them too much discretion, then, and that's, so that's always a scary part about it. So as I said, we're looking at concepts. It doesn't mean this is necessarily a valid concept. There may be other ways to do the same thing that are, that'll protect the interests of the community and the public more than this, but I thought we would just put a list of things that we would look at, and as I said, this is just a starting list.
Could I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
A couple particulars to try to follow up on that a little bit? It's my, if we had a narrow lot and it didn't meet the criteria, under this regulation here, under this possibility of regulation, could the person, he could get waivers then to build a non-standard house on a lot that otherwise would remain vacant, for example?
That would be, that would be exactly correct, but it would have to have certain aspects that meet the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, so he couldn't build a, you would say, "We'll do this, but you're building a contemporary house in a more traditional neighborhood, therefore, with that in mind, we won't," but if you went, came back to a more traditional home, we might give you the waiver more easily on side yard restrictions or something?
And part, that's exactly right, and part of what we have in here is working with the Historic Preservation Commission, who are, have, are commissioned to look at those kind of historic issues.
So it's a give-and-take type thing as opposed to a set of rules?
Right. It'll be a start, it'll end up being rules.
Okay.
Yeah, but it'll be, it'll be a process you go through in balancing this, so I, so, and it takes a while to do these things. I mean, I've looked at, well, we'll go like for residential infill district. They have overlays that do that, that basically, if you're eligible lots, you can, you get certain aspects. There's several communities that have that, so we have a lot of examples that have been done. Also, conservation or neighborhood stabilization district, this is more regulatory and that approach rather than incentive. The reason why I'm really pushing these incentives again, we haven't had a lot of investment in this community, and putting more regulations in there and saying, "No, I don't think it's going to do what we're really looking to do," and that, so we're trying to emphasize more incentives, but this is still something that could be done without being too draconian, depending on what it is, and it's been done in other communities. The last one is more, probably a little more controversial, had, or transfer of development rights within the district, and that would be, you could use for historic buildings, could transfer rights to another property in there, to you, in that district. To use those rights, you would have to meet certain development standards, again, to protect the neighborhood. So that we would have to look at to see if that can be done. And part of it is looking at the, I don't, I believe we keep in the same district, we don't have a charter problem. I'd have to legally look at it, but that's been something that's been brought out to look at that. In fact, I believe there's a policy in the comp plan that spelled that out.
Now, this having a date almost a year out for this draft report, that wouldn't affect the approval of the comp plan?
No, 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 this is a policy to do it. We've got a bunch of those. A lot of them aren't being met. I mean, and I think I have endeavor, don't I, in the actual language? It's called equivocating, right? But I'm going, I mean, I'd really like to do something because I think part of what we do, if that policy document can be done, has application in other neighborhoods. Clearly, like Osceola Park or Edgewood, there's several areas in the city that it would have application to. It wouldn't necessarily just have to be Original Town, because the concepts can be transferred. So I think that's a good carrot, you know, incentive to really try to do something here. I don't guarantee sometimes getting these all done, just because there's so much we have to do, next year, we have to do the comp plan, we've got to update that thing. I can't in all good conscience or ethics or tell the state that our comp plan doesn't need to be updated. It's a little hard, they're about 20-some years. 12.7, I need, this policy gets to, there's been a lot of discussion over, in the Vision Plan, if you recall, there was comments about overlay districts and that, and they talked about that you had to have a supermajority of the property owners. Well, that could be tough to do, especially in a neighborhood where you got a lot of absentee landowners, and we've got it in some of these. So I tried to modify that because there wasn't any direction what a supermajority meant. Usually, it's around 67% or 66%. We came up with a policy here that if we go, decide to go forward with this, anything that dealt with an overlay district specifically that affected all the property owners, that it had to at least be four considerations that the council would look at. First, the public interest to be served had to be identified, the level of property owner support, and it's still important to know what that is in relationship to the impact. So if the regulations have a heavy impact, clearly, you want to have more property support. If they're minor impact, so there's some, you know, balancing there. Also, the recommendations of you all and the staff or in the HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission are important to take into consideration. You are the bodies that they trust to give advice on these things and have all these workshops and hearings on this. Lastly, is there sufficiently available financial and staff resource to prepare to administer overlay? And that's, if I told you, a lot of things make sense sometimes, but to do them, it's very difficult, you know, if you don't have the, and that doesn't mean you can't work in ways to be more efficient or effective to do that.
How do you measure the level of property owner support? Is that like a mail-in?
Well, usually, if we get into some of these, it would probably at least getting affidavits or signed signatures of the support. It really depends on what will be proposed. As I said, if it's a major thing, you definitely want to see where the support is.
So you're doing a mail-out survey, kind of like a paving project or something?
Right. And if, let's say we have a group that wants to do it, they would, we would expect them to submit an application, would show that. 12.8, now, this is the Historic Preservation Commission's, I said, because of the historic nature of this neighborhood, I think it's important that there's some involvement of the Historic Preservation Commission in this because they deal with these kind of issues, and clearly would be very interested in, since it has a lot to do with protecting the historic resources. And part of that, they're doing it through education of property owners. In fact, they're talking about having presentations and maybe some workshops to do that. Assistance in pursuing neighborhood designation.
Who is "they," Tim?
Historic Preservation Commission are talking about doing that. In fact, we had a discussion today at their meeting. Assistance in pursuing neighborhood designation on the National Register of Historic Places, this was done for Osceola Park, and I think one of the things that come out this morning, we discussed, and I think I brought up to you, we were talking about expanding the eligibility of projects that can get tax abatement. Right now, you have to be locally designated, but we're not getting a lot of takers, because when you're locally designated, you fall fully under the regulations for a historic building. So we're thinking of expanding to include any kind, it's on the, any, a building on the National Register, or any contributing building that's on, in a national historic site and that, or a district, and that includes Osceola Park right now, which is on one, that any of the contributing buildings in that area would be eligible for that. The only, the concerns we have, there's some, is one, that there isn't a lot of tax abatement because it's just the city taxes. The county does not have this ordinance, so it would be good to see if that could be done at some future date. The other thing is right now, that any, it's a kind of cumbersome process because you have to go through the Historic Preservation Commission, but that is the cumbersome part, then you have to send it off to the state to review, and the pre-construction drawings, they come back and do, before they make a recommendation, the city council goes into that. I would like to think eventually, that if we get enough interest in this, that it can be done by our Historic Preservation Board. They are, they're about to be certified local government by the state, so just want to point that out. And they also would participate with the Planning and Zoning Board, advise the council on overlay and other regulations proposed specifically for the neighborhood. That's the addition that I did, I show in black there. I wanted to expand it, I just had overlay, and I said, "Well, why did I do that?" So I think that's, I'd like to have that role in there.
Should we be getting minutes from the Historic Preservation Board or have some other mechanism to have some clue as to what they do?
Certainly, we could provide you with the minutes, that's not a problem at all. And if there's something--
How would you advise, I'm trying to get a feel for the relationship between that board and maybe Architectural Review and ourselves?
Well, yes. Well, yes.
And would there be some, some mechanism so we have a feeling what's going on with them?
Well, basically, any, any building that's historic, that's designated, they, they have to review any, anything. But you may review them too for development approval. Or I might, it might be my approval subject to their getting approval from the Historic Preservation Commission. So, there's that role. There is no Architectural Review except for what they look at when they're looking at the, the federal guidelines for, you know, historic buildings. Okay? So, at this point in time, I see it more of a role of working with you all as things come up for education of the owners, or we have new regulations coming up that would affect that neighborhood and the historic, I cert, we'd certainly like to have their input. Nothing says we couldn't have a joint meeting. I'm watching, Tammy. And we used to, you know, that could be done at times, where we get something that would be good to have an exchange, where we get into, you know, on some specifics on a neighborhood. I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, I want to do whatever is the easiest way to go through this, but it'll be a, kind of a learning experience for everybody.
Tim, I'd like to ask, the interreaction between the two boards, if they're pushing in one direction and we don't even know that as another board, I think that could be helpful to us to know what they're trying to accomplish. So, we're not working in the opposite direction and not even knowing that it's important.
Oh, no, I won't, I, no, no. And I think part of giving you the minutes, I certainly wouldn't, if there's an issue coming up, I, as your staff, I'll bring that up. I'm not going to, I won't want two boards going at each, you know, at cross purposes, no.
There's very few historic properties right now to be concerned with, number one, and number two is, but in general, the, the direction they're taking, we don't want to be in conflict with them, I think that would only add more confusion to what we have right now.
Well, and that's why I wanted them to be, have some involvement in at least providing advice on when we get into incentives and regulations, okay?
I agree.
And that's it. I mean, you will be the final say on those generally, I mean, unless it's.
But there's no use us working in different directions.
No, and I don't want that.
We should use all of that before we have a final result.
No, and I, and they want to work with you all, it's just, we don't need to get into that problem we had with the Architectural Review Board, that was, trying to avoid that kind of conflict that we had, all right? 12-9, and this is a list of all the, basically, this really comes from the strategies, and then basically, a lot of these are pretty no-nonsense, straightforward, that the city would continue to support the neighborhood watch, we look at calming efforts, we have a street calming policy program that can be applied, work to identify, prioritize for budgets, for infrastructure improvements, and that thing really hasn't been done in the past. I mean, I think it's getting an active neighborhood together that we can work with them to try to identify that. There isn't a lot of money, but there are things that maybe could be done, you know, if they're identified ahead of time and be put into the budget process. Look at some grant opportunities, support efforts to establish a neighborhood and identification and historic street names, that's something that's come up, I think, that worked on, it would be great. Support of comprehensive code enforcement programs, and I, I mentioned today that was brought up, that we would do that for neighborhoods that come forward, to try to clean the neighborhoods up, we don't, the neighborhood up, we don't, sometimes there are things going on, and it's good sometimes just to do a big sweep, a lot of times to do that, it's a neighborhood cleanup at the same time, get rid of a lot of debris, you know, and everybody working together. But we really need the help of the neighborhood groups and the organized groups to help us in that, rather than our trying to herd a bunch of people together on that. The others, provide outreach support to the neighborhood by professional staff, if there's some questions that come up, we certainly, staff would be willing to go out there to do that. And last, work with the Indian River MPO and GO Line. Hopefully, GO Line issues were still, aren't as bad as they were before, I hope, but we, but every now and then, we'll get, the GO Line buses are moving too fast through here, we don't like that location, we certainly would, would like to work with them on that. So, we put that in there, because that was important at least at one time to the neighborhood.
Is this anything that we get involved in at all, other than, you know, a recommendation tonight?
I'm sorry, in what regard? You mean, the GO Line, what the?
Well, any of those 12.9.
Implementation, implementation of that, you mean?
No, you're, you're generally not been involved in, in some, some of this you may get involved in, things that come up on traffic calming, you may get involved, there's certain things that you would come in, but not all those things. I mean, the, but this is just good to have a policy support, this is what the, the city would be following to do that, so, I mean, it shows the commitment to the, the neighborhood.
So, is there, is there a specific department or staff that would?
Well, it's, it's basically, several of the, the aspects are usually planning, public works, and police, and sidewalks, really the, the major ones here. I mean, the manager will get involved when there's a coordination thing.
Code enforcement, of course.
And code enfor, well, they're under planning, I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, I'm looking at number three. Okay? Like, works.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me go backwards, I think. Well, how do I go backwards, previous? All right. Number three.
Number three, works ID, ID prioritized budget needed. Okay, who would do that?
That would be, the, the, it's in conjunction with the neighborhood, so a lot of things have to come from the neighborhood, working with the staff to do that. And, you know, sometimes the staff comes up with things because they're working, you know, Monty's groups out there working with them, but there are other things that come up, sidewalks are a major issue that come up, and sometimes.
If the neighborhood recognized or wanted to prioritize, they would work with staff?
Yes. That doesn't mean, but we'd need to set up so they can get it forward and then it can be programmed in our, the capital budget. All right? And finally, the staff analysis and findings. Staff wrote these with your help and the participation of the neighborhood, and we came up, we have to show that these things meet, to prove that, prove the amendment, you have to show that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan policies. And we identified the three, four, five, six, seven different policies that this is consistent. It's detailed in the report, I won't go over all of them unless you have some questions about it. And unless she has some questions, and me, you may want to open it up to public comment.
Can I get her comments before I open up for public comment?
Nope.
Let's see. I would now like to open it up for public comment about the proposal, and if you'd like to speak, please come forward. Yeah, don't believe you have to be sworn in today, do they? No, they do not, okay. So, if you'd like to speak, please come forward. Please state your name and address, though, although we may already know it.
Thank you, board. Linda Hillman, 2315 Eighteenth Avenue. Tim has said it all, we have worked since 2007, 2005 was the overview for the city to go through this, 2007, 2008, 2009, 10, 11, 12, we've had meetings every single year. So, it's like beating a dead horse. It's been a long time, and we need to start somewhere. And Tim and his staff have worked so hard on this, they've done such a great job. We've had our ins and outs through everything, but all in all, I think this is what the neighborhoods need to start with, we need to start with something. And he's worked with the Historic Preservation Society, he's worked with the Architectural Review, everybody has helped with this plan, and I think it's time that we get it going to the state, to the city council, wherever we have to go to get this implemented. I've been working with Melody Code Enforcement, I have not stopped. Neighbors around me have not stopped, and we've seen such a great improvement. She has really worked hard to make sure that original town is going back to where it needs to be and that it's kept up to code. And I won't stop working with her. I will call her every day if I need to. And Tim knows, I have called her sometimes, weeks on end, just leaving messages if I couldn't talk to her. We just need something to come down and tell people what we want in this neighborhood. And from the board, you can see who again is showing up and who again doesn't show up. So, it's the single homeowners who are interested in preserving this small little part of this neighborhood, and we have to start now. I thank you so much.
Anybody else like to speak this evening? Seeing nobody else, I'll close the public hearing. Board, discussion points?
I'm move approval.
I will second.
Before we do that, I, I think I'd just like to make a comment, it'll indulge me for about two minutes. Original Town, I believe, has so much potential. It's out there, it hasn't been realized yet, I don't believe, but I think you're on the verge. If you, if you follow through, and it won't be the city that follows through on this, it'll be the people of Original Town that follow through on this, and those neighbors in there that, that don't, aren't living in the type of residential neighborhood that you want to live in, it takes the individuals to talk to those people and to make sure they come around into that. And the, the people that aren't interested personally in the neighborhood, if they're interested economically, if they own property there, that's how you get to them. If they see the economic value of properties surrounding their, their community, that the neighborhood they're investing in, they'll do better to keep up with that, to promote that and push it forward. Without that, they won't. If they see it going downhill, I can assure you that they'll spend less effort improving your neighborhood than they did before, and that's only a downward spiral until other people give up. So, it's up to the people there. We'll do what we can here, and I know the city is supporting you, and I feel very strongly our board that we'd like to see this go forward, and we'd like to see Original Town be the, one of the premier communities of this city. So, I've, I would like to see it passed, and I'd like to see some real action on it, and if the board and others can be of assistance, we're there, I think, all of us, to help you out. Any additional comments?
I'd like to commend very exceptional people for their, for their staying with it, Linda Hillman, Vicki Cool, Anna Brady. You've been at this a very long time, and I have been attending your meetings, oh, valley, and, and it is, it's a very long time. You ought to be congratulated on this enormous effort. You're exceptional people, you love where you live, and you're committed to helping it. Thank you. It helps the whole city.
Any additional, we'd like to call vote then?
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Mutcher?
Yes.
Mrs. Polinsky?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Tim. You have been working with these people for a long time.
Well, I've got, look at the people I have, I mean, just wonderful.
Thank you.
I see a difference, just in the short time I've been with you.
Additional planning department matters this evening?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
All right. The board member matters?
Just a question, do we have any information regarding progress with this group that was forming to work on the issues with the beachside parking?
Uh, no, they're, my understanding, they were still gathering information, I haven't heard anything more than that. They did have a meeting, and they're gathering information. I will unfortunately mention that we, we're, the Mulligan's decision has been appealed, so I will, we will have to address that.
Who appealed?
Mr. Lauer and several other people.
I understand, it was, it's my understanding, they have, have had a meeting, and there's multiple meetings planned to try to find some kind of a compromise.
Yes, I mean, that's it. I, I know Penny Chandler, you know, at the chair, with the, with the, the chamber, has been orchestrating that, and she was over at the office the other day getting more information. So, I think they're going to hopefully come back. I think what we talked about, we're hoping they would come up with some solutions or some things they could look at, and the city would certainly want to work with them on that. So, they're looking at different aspects of that. So, I think that's it. As I've told a reporter today, I think it's getting the people on the same track and committed to something, and it's because all the divergency we've had in the past on parking and how to do it, should we have meters, no meters, I don't want parking in the middle of Cardinal, we need to get over that and try to get a consensus of where they want to go with that problem and how to do it, so.
One of the things that never came up, Tim, on that as far as parking, was Cardinal Drive improvement, because it's such a wide thoroughfare.
Oh, and that, and that was something we looked, we looked at that.
That should have been put in that mix also.
Looked at that in the master plan, but it got shot down.
Right, it did, I remember that.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that's been the problem, you know, that, you know, we keep getting shot down, and so, I, you know, there's, there's some aspects.
And there is parking on the beachside, isn't it?
I know, I know. Well, you know, our, we're now becoming, we're picking up now, and we're becoming more of a destination resort.
We are.
And so, we have a lot of people that, you know, want to be at our beach up there, and they're, you know, when you don't have any parking duration limits, they're going to, so there's a lot going on down there. So, not that parking is, it is an issue, but it also shows we have a very successful commercial district.
And I think it's important to convey the attitude that we are a very friendly city.
Right.
Yeah.
Tim, you, two things. If you were to come across a report or minutes of that, that meeting on parking, if you could circulate that to us.
Yeah, I'll see if they're going to make that available. Yeah, I'd like to look at it myself.
And then, also, you said Monty was going to go down there and see if he could find any additional parking through restriping or?
I don't think there's a lot, because you don't get much out of, even if you, a little, you could pick up several spaces. I didn't, to be honest with you, I apologize, I have not asked him, Monty's on vacation, but I didn't tell you right away, but normally, you're not going to pick up very much.
Well, my, my elderly mother always told me that it takes little deal, appease the simple, and, you know, if we can get a few here and a few there.
I'll talk to him about it, and I apologize, I just hadn't, you know, he's been on, went on vacation, I didn't get back to him.
Yeah, there's a couple of those spaces, I can pull one at five mile an hour and park